Call this meeting to order of the York County School Board, August 27th, 2018. And it's hard to believe that summer's almost over. It's coming to an end in just seven short days, we'll have school starting here again. And I hope everybody's enjoyed some family time and are now energized and ready for a great new year. So we'll begin our meeting by asking our pledge leader, Peyton Short, to step forward while I read about her for just a moment. So Peyton Short is a 5th grader at Coventry Elementary School where Paul Assassin is the principal there. Peyton has been a member of the Coventry family since she entered kindergarten and is getting ready to begin her 5th grade and final year. Peyton is a caring and sweet student who works hard and always puts forth her best effort. Peyton is a very responsible student and a great role model for her peers. She was always the first one to volunteer in the class to run an errand or help with any tasks. She can be trusted to help set up the iPads and computers for the day, or to help a peer take notes if they were absent the day before. She gives 100% to the work she does in the classroom and is consistently on the honor roll. Outside the classroom Peyton enjoys taking part in after-school activities. She has participated in Girl Scouts, Girls Running Club, and was the SCA Vice President last year at the school. She also works with Coventry cafeteria staff and delivers breakfast in the classroom most mornings. It is an honor and pleasure to have Peyton representing Coventry as the pledge leader this evening, so please stand as she leads us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the 5th of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Peyton, appreciate that. And we have a little bit different format tonight with the, what's on the screen that you'll see, and that's because we have a new Board Doc software, so I'm gonna explain that when we get into voting. It's gonna be a little different than we've done in the past, but you'll see when we get to that part. So now we have recognitions and awards and introduction of new staff. Dr. Shandor, I'll let you introduce the newest staff members that are with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, board members, good evening. So I want to introduce and share a few comments related to the newest additions to our YCSD leadership team. When I say your name, we have a few of them sitting in the front row. If you'll please stand and remain standing. First, we have Ms. Barbara Nagel. If we can welcome Barbara Nagel. So Barbara is a, is our new Seaford Elementary School principal. Ms. Nagel has over 17 years of teaching experience. She's, she's served as an elementary school administrator for 13 years, with the most recent position as principal of Hilton Elementary School for the past six years. Welcome Barbara. Next, we have a familiar face, Mr. Royce Hart. If he'll please stand, give him a round of applause. You can tell he's looking at me, he's nervous of what I'm gonna say. So, Mr. Hart will be our interim principal at TAB High School. Mr. Hart served York County School Division for over 20 years prior to his retirement in March of 2017, with his last position as principal of Grafton High School. Thank you so much for coming back, Royce. You look great in orange. All right, next we have, next we have Ms. Angie Siders, if she'll please stand. Let's welcome Angie. So Angie's a familiar face. She spent a number of years at TAB High School. She is now the Associate Director of Compliance and Administration. Ms. Siders has over 25 years of education experience, with the last 16 as secondary level principal, serving the last eight again at TAB High School. And last but not least, Mr. Aaron McQuillan, if he'll please stand. So, Mr. McQuillan will be an assistant principal at Yorktown Elementary School. Mr. McQuillan worked as an English teacher at Grafton High School. While there, he was named YCSD's 2017 High School Teacher of the Year. Mr. McQuillan graduate, graduated from the William &amp; Mary K-12 Administrative Program this summer. So if you'll please join me in welcoming all these wonderful leaders to YCSD.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, and look forward to all the great contributions and hearing about the great contributions that these new leaders are making, are gonna make to our school division. So congratulations to each of you again. So now we're gonna move on to the York Foundation for Public Education. And Ms. Haywood, would you please share your comments?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. If Peyton Short will come, Peyton Short will come forward. Congratulations to Peyton Short, a 5th grade student from Coventry Elementary School, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. Mrs. Pam Neal, York County Foundation Board Member, will come forward to present a special gift from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education, in partnership with their donor, Joanie Theoka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet, along with a Walmart gift card donated by a foundation supporter. Congratulations Peyton.
Next, we have the National School Public Relations Association Awards, and I'm honored to share that the York County School Division Communications and Public Relations Office received three awards from the National School Public Relations Association. The National School Public Relations Association selected three projects as winners in the 2018 Publications and Digital Media Awards Program. These three entries were selected from among more than 1,000 submissions. First is the Award of Excellence, Special Purpose Publication Elementary Literacy Model Overview. Next is the Award of Merit, Video Produced In-House Spirit of Education Spotlight Video. And the third is the Award of Honorable Mention, Branding Image Package Elementary Music Festival, accepting on behalf of the department are Catherine Golf, Public Relations and Communications Officer, Jordan White, Digital Communications and Marketing Specialist, and Jason Short, Senior Programmer Analyst. Thank you again, that's great work. So next, we have the Virginia Association of School Business Officials, the VASBO recognition. If Mr. Bill Bowen, Chief Financial Officer, would come forward. Mr. Bowen was named the Virginia Association of Schools Business Officials, the VASBO Cardinal Winner for 2018. The award has been, was presented at the VASBO Spring Conference held in Blacksburg on May 24th. VASBO recognizes one individual annually at the Cardinal, of the, with the Cardinal Award. The Cardinal Award is the organization's premier recognition as an outstanding school business official for the Commonwealth of Virginia. The award winner is selected by their peers and recognizes individuals who exemplify professionalism, leadership, and innovation in the field of school business management. So congratulations, Mr. Bowen. And next, we have the Virginia Index of Performance, the VIP Board of Education Awards, and I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Tony Vladu, the Director of Secondary Instruction, to present these awards this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson and members of the board. The Virginia Index of Performance, or VIP Program, recognizes schools and divisions that exceed state and federal accountability standards and achieve excellence goals, correction, and divisions that exceed states and federal accountability standards and achieve excellence goals established by the governor and the board. The 2018 VIP Awards are based on the data from the 2016 school year. I am pleased to share that YCSD and 10 of 19 YCSD schools earned VIP Awards for 2018. At this time, I would like to have Mr. Richardson come forward to receive the Board of Education This year, three YCSD schools earned the Board of Education Excellence Award. This award recognizes schools that meet all state and federal accountability benchmarks and made significant progress toward goals for increased student achievement and expanded educational opportunities set by the State Board of Education. Please join me in recognizing the following schools. From Mount Vernon Elementary, Principal Kristen Bowden. From TAB Elementary, Principal Mary Lugo. From Waller Mill Elementary, Assistant Principal Beth Welch. Seven York County School Division schools earned the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. This award recognizes schools that meet all state and federal benchmarks and made progress toward the goals of the governor and the board. Please join me in recognizing these schools. From Bethel Manor Elementary, Principal David Wrights. From Coventry Elementary, Principal Paul Assassin and Assistant Principal Melissa Horton. From Grafton High School, Principal Whitney Cataldo and Assistant Principal George Page. From Seaford Elementary, Principal Barbara Nagel and Assistant Principal Lisa Jalamo. From TAB Middle School, Principal Heather Young. From TAB High School, Principal Royce Hart. I knew that would get a chuckle. Alright. I think that's a joint award. And from York High School, Principal Shannon Butler and Assistant Principal Jamie Carleo These achievements are the result of our collective efforts of our hard-working students, dedicated teachers, and administrators, as well as our supporting families. Congratulations, a job well done.
Don't fall, babe.
Alright, well, thank you very much, Dr. Vladu, for that presentation. And the board will now take a short recess, so the board can meet tonight's award recipients and new staff members. And I'd ask that all the award recipients come forward so we can take pictures during this break, and also the board members, we have a Welcome Back to School banner we'd like to take a quick picture with also during the break. So, thank you, we'll take a short recess. So now we're gonna reconvene the meeting back, and we're gonna start with unfinished business, which we have none, and we're gonna move into our capital projects report. Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm gonna bring up Mr. Mark Shearhart, Associate Director for Capital Plans. He's gonna present this month's capital project report.
So this evening's capital projects report is focused mostly on TAB Elementary, as you would expect. And I'd just like to share a lot of, share some pictures with you of TAB Elementary during the renovation. Project status says today is they're finishing cleaning, painting, caulking the building. They're wrapping up some building regulations, inspections. They did receive their final on the plumbing and also on the mechanical inspections today. They are still waiting for inspections on the fire sprinkler system and on the electrical systems in the building. We did not receive occupancy for the building because of those other inspections that need to be done, so we have not received occupancy for the building yet. They are also continuing to test and adjust HVAC systems, finished programming the lights they put in, they put in new LED lights throughout the building. Substantial completion was scheduled for August 17th, obviously they missed that date. We should've been on, in on that date. Occupancy is yet to be determined, based on the inspections tomorrow. Mary Ann, let me know that she potentially would be there early Thursday, very early Thursday morning to do the final building inspection. And their final completion for the building is on, is scheduled for September 30th. So here's what TAB Elementary's canopy looked like before we started the renovations. And as you go through here, you'll see the different phases of that renovation. Here's day two, you can see we took off part of the roof here. In this area, we put the, we put a flat roof and we put some, or low slope roof, and we put some heating and air conditioning equipment in this location here. And this is what, on day two, this is what the hallways looked like inside the building. You see the ceiling tiles missing now, and they were taking them all out and taking out light fixtures. Day three, here's classrooms, now you can see the ceiling and the grid is completely gone in this classroom, the next thing they would do is take down this ductwork. Here's one of the large restrooms, you can see it's a bear. This is, this is the existing canopy, so you see it's a little bit different than what is, what it was when they had, at the beginning of the renovation, as they taken, as they're taking it apart. Then they started loading, these are new roofing panels here, they loaded them on the existing roof. You see the big, the metal rails there, the purlins, that they call them purlins, that the new roof mounts on top of. So we put a new metal roof on top of the existing metal roof, and this is only on the very top of the building and on the front of the building, the areas that the contractor could do this, this summer. So that's day 13 here, they already started doing that. Day 39, here's the plumbing that's in the main restrooms. You saw that one before where they had gutted the restrooms, they took, they dug out the concrete floors, they took out all the piping, replaced all the piping, and now they poured concrete floors back in here. We also took out the old boiler room and used that as to expand the size of the girls' restrooms into that area. This is what the canopy looked like on day 41. You see all the, all the old metal had been removed, they primed all this, the existing steel that was left, and then they're gonna start adding steel back to this. Here, they're pouring a new sidewalk underneath the canopy, we had to take the old sidewalk out, because we moved the front door out, we had to put a little bit more of a slope in the concrete coming up to the front of the school, so we had to do this on day 46. Also, day 46, you can see here, the grid work is going into the classrooms, you can see the light fixtures installed, you also see some of the ductwork up above, above the ceiling grid. Also, in the wrapped in blue there, you can see some, some of the air conditioning units. So on day 48, you can see they had part of the, the new roof installed there. You can see it's a charcoal gray versus the old nasty, not sure what that red color is, but anyway, it's a lot nicer looking. And in the vertical panels are a shale gray, so a lot, they're a lighter color gray. So it's a two-tone system there, it just makes it a lot, lot nicer looking. Day 48 also done, and so not only were they working on the roof, they're also working inside, so you can see here, this is where the, the floor I showed you earlier, the concrete floor with the pipes sticking out of it now, this is the, the metal walls going between the restrooms are installed, you can see the piping being installed into metal, into the metal framing there, day 48. Day 49, the flat roof is prepared on the roof, on top of the building, that previous picture I showed you where they had tore off the roof, and now they're setting all the air conditioning equipment up. You can see it here dangling from the crane as they bring it over and set it on top of the roof, so they set up, I think it's 12 air conditioning systems up there. And then here's the canopy, as you can see now, it's starting to make, it's starting to take shape here as they put the metal framing up, day 56, August 11th. Then you can see here now, I jumped ahead to day 72, just to show you what's going on today, August 27th. This is what the classrooms are starting to look like. Our custodians have been in there very, very busy, cleaning and waxing these floors in the classrooms, they started moving the furniture out of the gymnasium, and also out of the back, sixth classroom addition, back into the original rooms. So that's part of what they, and you can see here now, the ceiling tiles are in, the lights are on, air conditioning units are running in here, but you can see it's starting to, starting to take shape. This is not what every single room looks like though, this is about maybe a third or half of the rooms right now look like this here. They, most of the classrooms had the floors shined or waxed and buffed, but most of them don't have the, don't have the furniture in them yet. This is what the new restrooms look like, it's dramatic difference from the old, old restrooms. This is not, obviously not in operation here, you can see the hand dryers have not been wired up yet, you can see the plastic is still on the, the stall partitions here, and the sink is also not in operation, but it's very close, it'll be all operational tomorrow. This is what one of the hallways looks like, we've replaced all the ceiling tiles, the ceiling grid, new lights, new paint job, it's also got new drinking fountains, they have the water filling, water bottle stations on the drinking fountains, so we think that the children will, the students really like this now when they go back there, very bright. This is the new security vestibule, you see the door on the left-hand side here, that's the door going into the offices, you see the, right behind there, you see the counter that's covered up with cardboard right now to protect it, and right in front, where these gentlemen are standing there, that's the three doors there, that's your actual security doors, there's three doors that I'm standing in right now to take this picture, there's the three front doors, and then these are the three security doors further into the, into the building. We've widened this entrance here, the entrance was used to only be eight foot wide, now it's about 12 to 14 foot wide in this area, so we made it a lot wider. This is the canopy from the front, you can see they're putting what they call EPHIS on the outside of it, so they're starting to clad that, they have the, the new concrete blocks going up to the, around the, around the legs of the canopy. And then here's another picture here of the front of the school, you can see the EPHIS taking place around that canopy, and you can also see the two-tone of the front of the building, the, the front fascia, as well as the roof here, you can see the charcoal gray roof as, with the shale gray, gray front on the fascia. We've also changed out the windows here, you can see in the, the windows here now have aluminum, bright aluminum frames, before it was the, the old, the old green frames with the green bottom on the bottom, a green panel on the bottom of the windows, so it brightened the school up, and we think it makes more, look a lot more modern now by, by doing these, making these changes to the building. And that's gonna be my last, well, that's my last slide for TAB Elementary, I'll touch on these here designs. Right now, while we're doing all this, all this work at TAB Elementary, we're also in the process of redesigning Grafton Complex, replacing the HVAC there and redesigning those main offices. We're also in the process of designing the roof, York High Roof Replacement, this is for next summer. The Coventry Elementary Security Vestibule, the Mount Vernon Elementary Security Vestibule, Dare Elementary's Breezeway Enclosure, and Mount Vernon Elementary Breezeway Enclosure. So, not only were we working on TAB Elementary School, we're also working on these other projects. And this is all along with the help of the new, my new assistant, Ken Yerby, has been a big, a big help to getting this all processed here. And that's gonna be, this will be my last slide, the next part of this presentation will be Greg Dolak's, do you have any questions for me?
So TAB right now has the secondary entrance on the side, TAB Elementary. So how is the, how would the transition, how would that occur, when, I guess on the 30th or right after the 30th of September?
According to the subcontractor, he believes that he's gonna have that whole, the whole canopy done by Wednesday. So if that happens, and Mary Ann gives us her blessing on Thursday, then we can use that front entrance and use the front main offices. So if that doesn't happen, then we'll just go ahead and use the, this, the side entrance like we did at the end of the school year last year, but that's a backup plan that we don't think we're gonna have to use, but it's still set up there, all we've gotta do is start, you know, put the, put the people back in the office and start operating out of there.
Okay.
Did that help?
Yes, I couldn't tell from your picture, but are the tiles in the bathroom orange and black, hopefully?
They're, they're gray. They're gray, the tiles on the floor are gray.
What about on the wall?
On the wall, the top of it is white, and then we have below that is a light gray. We wanted to make the bathrooms brighter, and then we did the, the gray, no, I'm sorry, the black and the orange in that square pattern, because we didn't wanna put that much black into the, into the restrooms, we wanted to keep them bright.
Mark, a quick question. Every summer, we watch you stress with the projects, because our window is always just so short to get some of these projects done when the kids leave that last day of school, and then flip that school basically to get it ready for the kids to return in September. As our buildings continue to age and we're doing these type of projects, are we starting to get concerned that we're not gonna meet, I mean, or a contractor wouldn't be able to guarantee to meet certain deadlines to get these buildings back operational?
We increased the liquidated damages on this project, actually doubled them from what we had previously, trying to push the contractors to get the, the project done on time, you know, that the substantial completion date was August 17th, but they missed that.
This is also a two-year project, correct?
Yeah, right, it is a two-year project, right. We're only, we're only doing parlor roof this summer, we gotta, we have to finish up the rest of the roof next summer, we're replacing cabinets in the classrooms next summer, we're replacing all the windows around the building, that's all happening next summer. So there's a lot of different pieces to this puzzle we couldn't get done this year, we had to leave out till next summer. The biggest problem for doing projects during the summer is the fact that all the other school divisions are trying to do the same thing, so the contractors are all stressed in many different directions, and, and they keep telling me, no matter which general contractor it is, they tell me their hardest problem is trying to find subcontractors that have enough workers. They just don't have enough people working for them, or they can't find people, or they're spread out too thin, they took on too many projects and things like that. So it's materials, trying to get the materials on time, and then trying to get the workers here on time, and that's, that's their, one and two is their problems every single year. It's the same thing I hear from every, every general contractor. It's not the fact the general contractor doesn't wanna get it done, it's just there's not enough people.
Well, it's good that they're being transparent about that, so that we know it, you know it, you know, so they're, like in this case, you broke the project up over a period of years just because, you know, if that's one of the cases or reasons, but it is, you know, you always worry about, you know, what's behind this, or what's gonna happen when you take this down and such, but then it's a bigger picture, I didn't even think about the fact that, you know, the subcontractors, are there enough trades out there that can provide the services for so many different projects happening at the same time? That could be a huge challenge, so, but good job.
This is part of the reason that some school divisions do a project, start it in the summer, they, they work on it through the school year in the evenings, and then they work on it the next summer again. So some, some school divisions work on their projects like that, now your building's all tore apart during the whole school year, so do we wanna have that or not, so?
Yeah, I think we tried that at TAB Middle School, I don't think we wanna go through that again.
Nope.
If I may piggyback on that, was weather concern this summer?
Weather?
Weather, weather was a, a small concern when we opened up the roof there on the top, that one piece there, but the contractors came up with some pretty ingenious ways of getting around it, they built big tents up there, and so they could keep working no matter how, no matter that fact it was raining. And so we felt like they did, they only claimed two weather delay days for exterior work, so I thought that was outstanding for the amount of rain we had this summer.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Shearhart, and I understand you were under the weather, so I appreciate you coming out tonight, even, even though that, you had to deal with that, so, but thank you.
I'm on the mend.
Okay, good, good to hear.
Thank you, Mr. Shearhart. Now I'm gonna ask Mr. Dolak, if he'll come forward. Mr. Dolak's our Associate Director of Maintenance, and he is gonna share some summer projects that we did through the summer, and the, one of the main reasons we wanna share this with you, the, the resources used for these projects, $750,000, were allocated by the Board of Supervisors and Mr. Morgan from last summer from their end-of-year funds. So I think it's important that we wrap back around and show the community and the supervisors and others some of that work, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Dolak.
Alright. Mr. Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight some of the things that we were able to accomplish this summer. Like to start off with security vestibules, this summer, we are installing security vestibules at three, or three additional schools, Bruton High School, Dare Elementary, and Seaford Elementary. Before you, you see pictures of Bruton on the left and Seaford on the right, so the, I'm sorry, Dare on the right. The Seaford project is going to be very, almost exactly the same as that, just slightly different colors. And as you know, the advantage of the security vestibule is the fact that we direct visiting traffic into the office where they could be greeted and checked in, and then sent into the building if needed, or have, you know, students arrive and have them meet with them. So those are going well, those should be done by the end of the, end of the week and be fully functional, ready to go for the start of school. Yorktown Elementary, this summer, we were able to go in and replace floor ceramic tile and add ceramic tile to the walls in some of the original restrooms that were in the building, and then two additional staff restrooms up front. And that's really helped clean those restrooms up, it's going to make them much easier for the custodians to clean, more pleasing environment. At the same time, at Yorktown Elementary and also at Grafton Bethel, we are we were able to go through and replace a significant portion of the ceiling tile. When we did both renovations, we've had two different styles of ceiling tile and we were able to even that up. And so makes more aesthetically pleasing look and then also it's just, it's a newer tile. Has that ready. TAB High School interior painting. This is the first interior repaint at TAB High since the renovation back in the late 90s. So we're very excited to have that done. The new colors really make the building look great, cleans it up, makes it look a lot better. You can see there in the cafeteria, you also notice some brand-new cafeteria tables that are there. And in addition to painting at TAB, we also put vinyl tile on the floors of the band room and chorus room. This is something that both choral director and the band director have asked for. And while we were there, we also put carpet in the Kiva. So those had a real nice facelift and as you can see, those turned out very well. Sidewalk repair. In the past couple of years, we've been going through and allocating money to repair damaged sections of sidewalk across the division. So this summer, we worked on sidewalks at TAB High, Queens Lake and Grafton School Complex. This project here is an interesting project. We're doing this in collaboration with the IT department. There are a school zone light automation system. In case you didn't know, VDOT last spring approved the installation of two flashing school zone lights on Cook Road to service York High School. So those were installed last week. And along with that, we are in the process of installing an automation system. In the past, we have looked at automation systems that ran on cell technology. Problem with those is you have to incur a contract. Every individual sign has to have a cell device. So it's a pretty pricey yearly expense. IT has found this company for us. We hook, build a server, which actually transmits a signal from the individual building out to the sign itself, no additional yearly cost. And the great thing about this also is it saves my technician from literally touching every single sign in the division and spending about 15 minutes at each side putting in the program for the year. And if you can imagine Rochambeau standing on a ladder on that road doing that, he's, he's very excited about it, as am I. Our people are too valuable. So this is a great addition. Mount Vernon's parking lot was able to be repaved this summer and restriped. And if you notice on that picture on the right, that is the bus loop that had some pretty significant damage. So we're very pleased that that's happened there, get that taken care of. And that concludes the summer projects. Do you have any questions?
Yes, real quick.
Sure.
Your server for the, the school light automation system, where is that hosted?
I believe it's hosted at the school board office.
Okay. Is there a backup plan for power outages?
The, some of our newer signs are solar and the clocks themselves actually have a battery backup in them, so they'll hold programming. And really, from my understanding, is we push the program to the clock and then the clock holds the program.
Okay, good.
So. The other advantage with that system that I didn't mention is one of the biggest advantages. On snow days, we can, with a press of a button, shut the system off. We can turn the lights off. We can schedule them for a two-hour delay. So that's gonna be a big advantage for us.
That's awesome.
I like that. That's, that's a great, great update there. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, we're gonna move into a, our transportation update. Dr. Shandor, can you introduce the next president?
I sure can. So I'm gonna invite Dr. Carl James and Mr. Bill Bowen to the podium. They're gonna come forward and share some information related to our transportation department. Dr. James.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor and members of the board. Mr. Richardson, I'm very pleased to stand before you tonight and give you some information that came from the transportation focus groups. I'd also like to say how pleased I am that we had so many bus drivers, bus assistants, office staff, parents and administrators that came out to enter into this discussion because the main intent here is to improve what we do in transportation. My overall comment to everyone listening, I would like to say, they spoke and we listened. So throughout this presentation tonight, I'll share some of the information they provided with us and what the next steps are going to be to address some of the concerns from transportation during these, during the last school year. First of all, we had several meetings for bus drivers and bus assistants. There were four meetings, one in each zone, to make it convenient for the drivers to come out and the bus assistants to give us their feedback. Following that, we had one meeting for transportation office staff, which would include the secretaries, the dispatchers, the router, all of those people that are in the transportation office to give us their feedback. And then just a couple of weeks ago, we had a session with parents and administrators to get their feedback about what we needed to do to address some of the concerns from transportation. In both groups, with the transportation group and the parents and administrators, we had small and whole group discussions on questions that we provided. So with that, I'll talk about the questions and then get into the feedback that was provided. So for the transportation focus groups, the questions were, what are the positive accomplishments, accomplishments of the transportation department? Why is it difficult to hire retained bus drivers and bus assistants? What are the concerns and challenges faced by the transportation department and also what individual concerns do they have? And lastly, what are the next steps for the transportation department? So I'll just share some of the positive accomplishments from that group. Teamwork, they talked about, how it's displayed by everyone. More importantly, they said, we get kids home safe each and every day. And thirdly, we have great people in the transportation department who are committed to working here. I think that's really outstanding considering some of the challenges that we had last year. So that's just some, and I won't go into all of those, about some of the positive accomplishments of the transportation and well, from the staff focus groups. Major concerns. And you'll see this theme consistently when I talk about the parents and also with the administrators. Pay and benefits, not competitive. Pay for training. Support needed for bus drivers. Communication, and that's all facets of communication. When someone calls the office, how we get back to them and how we inform parents when there's been a change. Double routing. Now I know if you heard about double routing and how that places additional stress on drivers. They step up to the plate and they help, but it does change their daily schedule. And with that, you may have some issues with morale because I'm being asked to do more each and every day, but I'm willing to do it and that's what came from the drivers and the assistants. Some of the suggestions from the staff focus groups, you can see them, increase the pay. The attendance bonus and the recruiting bonus, increase those amounts. Improve communications. Revised procedures for establishing the routes. And you'll see that play out additionally when I talk about the next steps in this process. More suggestions, procedure for assigning field trips. Additional training for bus assistants. Assign the dispatches to specific zones. And an opportunity I think is very important for ongoing feedback throughout the year from the bus drivers and from the bus assistants. The next part is gonna be the administrative and the parents focus groups. Held a couple of weeks ago, five school-based administrators, 11 parents, and that was representation from all school levels. Format, they had a different question. What issues and concerns need to be addressed in order to optimize the effectiveness and consistency of transportation services? So we went through three steps, identify the issues, clarify the issues, and then identify the major concerns and issues. So major issues and concerns. Communication, we heard that before. Not enough drivers, the double routing. Overcrowded on buses because of double routing. Two-way communications. Inconsistent pickup and drop-off times and substitute bus drivers' knowledge of the routes. So what have we accomplished with all of that feedback that we received from those groups? We've looked at the existing routes, reviewed them and we've consolidated those routes. If I can double on any different day, any given day, then those routes were not at capacity. So there's some capability to lessen the need to double. So our plan going forward this coming school year is not to double. If the route stays consistent, it's easier to communicate to parents when that bus is not there or if we need to change a bus number because we had a mechanical problem. That should help improve the communication. And if we don't have a driver for that route this year, then that route's gonna be held at the school and a bus is gonna return to take those students home. And it's easier to communicate that because we're dealing with one group of students that we're not splitting two or three different ways. A new procedure for assigning field trips, that's gonna be done solely through the software. We were asked a question by a bus driver last week, well, if I know I can't make it, can I call my friend Bill to take my route? No, you cannot do that. You need to tell us and we'll use the assignment chart within the software to contact the next driver for that trip and see if we can have someone to take that trip. Some information was provided last week during Transportation Academy about benefits. The EAP, Bus Operations and Security, and how to connect with students. Because there was some concerns about discipline. And we all know if we're connected to our students and we know those students and they know us, it's easier to deal with issues of discipline whenever they should occur. Ongoing throughout the year, we're gonna review the bus routes and the field trip assignments to make sure they are according to plan. Then also, we reviewed reasonable bus driver compensation and developed a proposal, a proposal rather, to increase bus driver and bus assistant pay. That will come before you later in this evening with a request to look at bus driver pay and see what we can do to increase that. So we are more competitive throughout the region. Things that are still on the plate that are gonna be accomplished during next school, during the upcoming school year. Monthly advisory group meetings composed of bus drivers and bus assistants from each zone. And those will be held monthly to get that ongoing feedback. Revised procedures for all facets of communications, including the information in the MyStop app. Review bus routes and field trips assignments periodically. Continue to recruit additional bus drivers and bus assistants. And also, as I said, it'll, it's on tonight's agenda, to submit a recommendation to you to increase the pay for bus drivers and bus assistants. So with that in mind, my colleague, Mr. Bowen, will talk about the specifics of that particular recommendation.
Can we ask questions of?
Do you have any questions for Dr. James before he sits down?
I have two, if I may. It's a great report. I'm so happy to see, you've been around as long as I have and his history repeats itself.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's, it's, it's really meeting the needs of the bus drivers. You mentioned four zones.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you want to elaborate on the four zones? Most people think of districts and there are five districts. What do you mean by zones and how do you cover zones?
The TAB zone, bus drivers that cover all of the schools in that area. The Grafton zone, the schools in that area, area. New York zone, schools in that area or this area, because we're in New York zone now, as well as the Bruton zone. Those four zones.
Cause oftentimes when you think five districts, how do you clarify those?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that parents were identified from all of the school levels.
Yes, ma'am.
How does that reflect equal representation across the five districts?
Yes, ma'am.
Or the zones, if you will?
Yes, ma'am. We have representation. We looked at representation for all of the zones as well as from all of the levels. We wanted the concerns from each level presented as well as what we see in each zone. So we looked at each zone, identified schools, talked to administrators to give us parent names that could come and provide us feedback. And I wanna thank the administrators for being willing to come out and also give us those names and that information to, and the parents also that came out to give us some feedback on the transportation.
Thank you.
Does the Grafton zone include Coventry?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay. The routes currently being used, weren't they established by the study a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Okay. So are you, are you modifying what was recommended and adapted or what are you doing there?
Right. You know, this is second part because even if they were recommended by a consultant, last year we looked at them and we had to modify that based on what we thought would be good, a good safe practice. When you do it by computer, you'll get one simulation. But when you had drivers actually drive it and give us recommendations about what should or should not be done, then we adjusted those routes. Over the last few years, we've been buying 77 passenger buses, which increases bus capacity. So now that gives us the ability to consolidate some of those routes because our fleet is multi-composed of 77 passenger buses versus the 65. And when I say that, when I say 77 passenger buses, it doesn't mean that there'll always be 77 passengers on a bus when it's fully loaded. When a bus is fully loaded, that means all of the students will be seated within the confines of the seat. So at a high school, we know we can't run a bus with 77 passengers. It has to be 60, 50 to 60 passengers. Just depends on which route it is. Elementary, the same thing, and the same thing in middle school. So we're not really putting 77 students on a bus when we assigned it initially.
Yeah. So for that same study, based on the route consolidation, the consultant recommended 11 new buses. The district chose to purchase 28. Why the disparity in the numbers? If the route, if they're, if they're, if the routes were decreased, why, why the disparity?
Well, there's two parts there. A bus replacement, that was one recommendation. But we also have a threshold when we actually, you know, replace buses. And that's gonna be 14 years or 200,000 miles. So we have to factor that in when it comes to the actual number of buses. We're gonna play above, I mean, replace above and beyond what the consultant recommended.
That's fair.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. So with the work that was done by Dr. James and his team, staff has developed six recommendations. And these six recommendations, they all impact compensation. And, and these have been incorporated in the change to the revised pay plan that the board will consider for action later in this meeting. But let me, let me run through each one of the recommendations. First, we're recommending that we revise the pay scale for bus drivers. This increases the starting pay from $12.44 to $14.60. It also increases the steps on the pay scale from 22 to 25. And this moves us up to third in the region and second on the peninsula, just slightly behind Newport News. We also recommend revising the pay scale for our bus assistants. This increases the starting pay from $8.60 to $10.80 and increases also the pay scale from 22 to 25 steps. And this moves us second in the region and first on the peninsula. Training pay for new hires, we're recommending that we do this. Our current practice is that bus drivers come to us with their CDL, so we don't pay for them to get their CDL. However, our experience has been that when we hire a group and we, and they see themselves through training, we may hire 25 to 30, but actually only eight to 10 might complete the training. So we believe that offering the training for the new hires, that might encourage more folks to stay in the program and, and we wouldn't start off a year short with drivers. We're recommending increasing the substitute driver pay from $12.25 to $14 an hour. Increasing the driver recruitment bonus. This is just a, a small bonus that we offer our bus drivers if they recruit somebody to come and drive for us. That's just a $50 increase. And then also increase the attendance incentive. Right now, we offer an attendance, attendance incentive for our bus drivers. If they don't miss a day in a semester, they get $100. If they miss a day, then they get $50. And we're recommending increasing that to 250. There's, there was about 26, I believe, in the first semester last year that received that bonus. Half that amount received it in the second, second semester. So there, there has been some challenges with attendance. So we believe that expanding that attendance, attendance incentive, not just requiring zero or one day absence, but to give them 95%, which equates to about four days and still be able to offer the incentive. So this is the summary of the fiscal impact. The total cost of that is $138,100. So how do we pay for this? So there's two ways, two suggestions on how to pay for this. Right now, we have about 13 unfilled bus driver positions. With the consolidated, consolidation of routes, we feel confident that we can capture four of those positions and use the budget, the current budgeted salaries and benefits from those positions to help defray part of the cost. We'll, we'll take $80,000 from the budget and use it to pay for this compensation increase. And then also, we've identified additional savings through employee attrition. Just from this, just from July 1, we've had one retirement. We've had over 27 employees either resign or just, just leave for whatever reason. And then we're still actively recruiting a number of custodians and again, bus drivers. So there'll be savings in the budget from these unfilled positions and from these changing positions. And we'll be using $58,100 of that to come up with the 138,100.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that's, and
I thought you were finished.
And that concludes, yes.
Are you done? Okay. We're talking about this revise, revision in the pay scale, bringing us up to third in the region, second on the peninsula. Where are we now comparatively? If you don't If you don't know, we can-
So right now with the bus drivers, right now with the bus drivers, we are currently sixth in starting pay. We're currently fourth in the mid and seventh in the max. So it'll bring us third in starting pay. We'll still be fourth in the mid and we'll go to five in the max. So we go from 6, 4, 7, where we currently are, to 3, 4, 5.
So go from sixth to third in the, for starting pay?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe we're behind Newport News by 17 cents.
17 cents.
May I mention, two things, two questions. You mentioned CDL license share for new hires.
Yes, ma'am.
What about, does CDL have to be renewed every year? Or every two years, every five years? Is there a renewal process?
I'll have to defer to-
And well, the question was going to be, if so, do we pay for that if they're still hired by us? Do we do that? That's one question.
It renews like a typical driver's license?
Good evening. It renews like a typical driver's license. There is a class they can get just to drive a school bus specifically that they won't charge them a fee for, but it would be a regular renewal fee with, to renew your license.
Do we pay for that for the employee or is that something they pay for?
They pay for that.
Okay. No, the question I was asking, if we are looking at now new hires and taking care of CDL, is it something we could give our already hired folks? That's one question. The other one is, I think you mentioned 27 resigned or left.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any idea why? And if it was salary and they left before we were doing this, is it something that they could reapply for if they wanted?
Well, these 27 are over all of our job classifications, so it's just normal attrition that we typically see this time of year. If Dr. Carol, Dr. Carol's going to speak to the revised pay plan when that action item comes up and he may be able to address some more, provide some more information on that, on the specifics of those transitions.
Okay, thanks.
I just, I don't know if mine's more question or comment. I know, Dr. James, you run the numbers on both sides of this as far as student counts and the money, Mr. Bowen. I focus in on the conversion of four bus drivers to capture. And I know that, I don't want us to come up short on drivers. And I know you run all the numbers and you've looked at the studies and the routes and I know I have 100% confidence that, yes, there are some routes that just don't have the capacity now we're gonna, so we don't have to double as much. Just a little concerned that we're cutting back a little bit in that area. As long as we're prepared for the fact that if something happens and things change, that we'll have to add back positions possibly, additional bus drivers for FY19 or FY20, whatever it would be. But I just, that's a little concerning, but not a big deal. Not really a question. I just know we tackled this department before to save money and it always seemed to be positions, so I just don't want to have too many positions and then come up short.
Right, thank you, Mr. Medford. With the four that were converted for increased to pay, we'll still have nine bus driver FTEs available to us for new hires. Right now, all of the routes are covered for the first day of school with consolidation. We also have a couple of subs. And our plan is to have those subs report to work each day and fill in where needed throughout the day, or if not, there's, if that's not a need for that. We constantly have field trips, athletic trips. So we're trying to build more capacity with the things that happen that are unknown to us overnight, so we're going to address those during the day as much as we possibly can.
I'm glad you just said that because that's what, that took care of that whole issue is you're bringing those substitutes in, there'll be something for them to do, but now we don't have to go looking for them at the last minute, they're already on site.
Absolutely.
Very, very good.
You know, most like the permanent subs we used to have for school seats there, remember that when you were in high school?
We used to have, yes.
Absolutely. Okay. You have questions?
Yes. As most of you know, money, a lot of people are not motivated by money. And all I see here is we're increasing salaries and things like that. So what other things have you put in place to help people be motivated? And do you have anything in place to capture data to see if this, if these increased wages helped alleviate some of the absenteeism and attrition maybe?
I can tell you now from our recruiting pairs, we've had some bus drivers that have gone to employment somewhere else and they've decided to come back this year as bus drivers. We had one bus driver that had retired and she's coming back to us. So when you hear people talking at the Transportation Academy, some of the drivers said to us they used to work in Newport News or surrounding divisions and they've decided that they weren't driving York County, so they are now driving for us in York County. As well as the constant feedback, I talk about the focus, the advisory groups to get feedback on them about how are things out in the field and what else we need to do. So we want to keep that ongoing dialogue with them throughout the year to make sure that we are addressing concerns with all our drivers. And as I said earlier, so they know when they talk to us about an issue, we're going to do our very best to address that concern.
I think it's significant to say that on slide 12, your first bullet, monthly advisory group meetings, not quarterly, not semi-annually, not at the end of the year, beginning of the year. You're actually meeting with these groups of folks monthly to get the feedback necessary to bring additional changes and evolve and develop a department within our division that basically greets the kids in the morning, first contact, and is the last contact the child has when they go home. So-
I think that, if I can weigh in, I think the thing that I was really impressed with with our drivers in this whole process, again, Ms. Parr led the focus groups with the drivers. I read every single line of all the feedback from all of our drivers. And yes, there were some concerns there about, you know, last year and the issues were well documented and Dr. James shared those this evening. But when I think about why I'm proud of them is they came up with so many solutions. So the drivers were, you know, these are people who are really dedicated to our families, dedicated to our community and our kids, and they came up with a number of solutions. So having an advisory group meet monthly, some drivers from each of the zones to review data, to review data regarding start times and entry times into the schools and dismissal times is incredibly important because we're bringing them in to help solve problems. And that's extremely important versus just somebody, you know, downtown or down at the bus garage trying to figure these things out. We need the drivers because they're driving the routes every day, so we have to establish that process. So I want to make sure that that was said this evening.
And I know a lot of hard, I'm sorry, I know a lot of hard work went into this from a lot of different folks and it, it's good to see what you just brought before us. This is fantastic because this is really going to, well, it sends a message. And you said it, Dr. James, we heard you.
That, exactly. That was what I was going to piggyback on.
We heard you. We heard it loud and we heard from multiple different directions and this board responded. Staff did their work excellent as always and brought recommendations, so thank you.
And I can tell you, excuse me to say it, what?
No, I was going to piggyback on that. When you say a major concern was communication, when you say I listen to you, that's meeting that need of somebody saying you do hear me.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. And I can tell you, and I know Dr. Shandor would agree, I attended the entire Transportation Academy last week and the dialogue and just talking to the drivers, they're a very happy group. I mean, you could feel it when you talk to them, you could see it on their faces. They were really happy people last week. And I'm excited to see what's going to happen this year with the changes we've made and things that we still hope to do to address the concerns that were shared with us.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'd like to make a comment too, that just riding with the bus drivers last year with Dr. Shandor and hearing some of their concerns and to see the work you've done is excellent. So thank you, Dr. James and Mr. Bowen, for that presentation. Appreciate that, thank you.
So now we're going to move into public participation at board meetings. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics that remain to the business of the school board. The school board expects each speaker to be courteous for modeling for our students and how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that the speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual member nor the superintendent, staff, member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. Each speaker may speak up to three minutes. A timer is visible to the speakers from the podium and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. As a reminder, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting or the hearing. And we have one person signed up to speak. And I would like to ask that you start the timer after they present their name and address and then when they start their comments, please. So our first one is Carol Bauer. That's the only person we have signed up tonight, so.
We're good friends. Of course, good day friends. Good evening. My name is Carol Bauer, reside at 410 Lakeside Drive, and I'm a proud member of the New York Education Association. Good evening and welcome to the 1819 school year. Teachers and staff have already been hard at work preparing classrooms, planning lessons, setting up classrooms, waxing and cleaning hallways and sprucing up the grounds, and of course, finishing up construction projects. I always like to start my year off thinking about how I can make a difference in my class and to my students. I usually call them my New Year's resolutions, and those are New Year's resolutions in August. This year, I thought you could join me in making a resolution to kick off the new year. Everyone involved in education, parents, staff, elected officials, needs to reach out and make sure that those in the Virginia General Assembly know that you support public schools all across Virginia and right here in York County. We can all show our support by wearing red every Wednesday this year and putting our best foot, you guys got to hold up all your socks, foot forward. A red for Ed sock, red for Ed foot. The New York Education Association is giving you, our school board members, red socks and a scarf to help you put your best foot forward or best side forward. Thanks for all that you do for us, for our students, and for public education. Let's make this a great year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bauer, appreciate that. Okay, next we have up on the agenda is matters by board members. And I asked each board member for any comments they may have. We'll start with Mr. Anderson, sharing remarks.
How did I know that? Well, it's good to be back, look forward to the new school year. I want to say thank you to Ms. Parr for your help with the transportation initiative. I attended the TAB block party on Saturday and it was good to see Dr. Bladu and some of the other, I can't remember, I'm terrible with names, some of the others out there. It's good to see representation by the district and I think the citizens that I talked to enjoyed seeing that representation. I'm looking forward to the recess survey that's coming out on the 29th. Thank you to Ms. Skinner for all your work with that. I know it was a busy summer regarding that, so we're really looking forward to that survey and getting the results back. On September the 11th, just to give you an idea of what my month coming up holds, I'll be at Coventry. We're having a Military Family Appreciation Potluck luncheon or dinner. I was asked by Ms. Sasson to attend that and help with her. On the 25th of September, I'll be attending a workshop up at VSBA headquarters in Charlottesville. And then finally, I want everybody to know that I feel very strongly that supporting public education is in the best interest of Virginia and York County. To show my support for public schools, I'll be wearing red on Wednesdays. And I ask that each of you also wear red and post a picture online with the hashtag red, the number for Ed. So that's all I've got.
Okay. Mr. Medford?
A couple of things. On a positive note, attended the new teacher orientation. They all showed up and it was exciting. And there was one individual that was very excited because she just found out the evening before that she had received her licensure or, and officially became, went from being one of our fabulous teacher assistants to being a teacher in one of our elementary schools. Very proud of her. It was just exciting to see the new faces walk in the door, such a diverse group, eager to get into those classrooms, but that was real fun to attend, it always is. And you always wonder what's running through their mind. Of course, you know, Dr. James, I guess you gave them the rundown of the county as you always do. But it's, you know, some of them know the county, some of them are returning back home, but it was just really cool. I want to mention something that was in the WY Daily. Everybody knows the SOL results have come out and we rocked it. I shouldn't say we, meaning the board, the teachers and the staff and the people, the boots on the ground in our buildings, our administrators, everybody that supports students. They rocked it. And the subgroups, good gracious. It's just, it makes me a very proud board member to, you know they work hard, you know the teachers are out there and they're putting their all into every classroom for every student. But then, this is like I put on the tweet thing out there, this is one measure, but it's still, you look at it and you go, they're doing a fabulous job working with our students and especially in their subgroups. Have thought to everybody because that's significant for York County schools. That's why everybody wants to move to York County, just one of the reasons. On a different note, this one's more disappointing than, but I feel like it's reached a point where I need to talk about it publicly. It involves Mr. Anderson and I'm going to basically just kind of, as a board member for the past 18 years, going on 19, almost finishing up year 19. When you see a subject or a topic that becomes something that generates a stir and a disturbance and a distraction and there's a lack of communication or process, it becomes, it becomes a little bit something that concerns me as a board member. And boardsmanship, our duties as a board member, where we get our legislative authority, the people that vote is sent to our office, we're tasked with certain things that we do as board members. And the last thing that a board wants to do is create a distraction or create hostility or create a level of something that happens in a community that can cause individuals to be confused or not understand something that should be so simple. One of the things that I wanted to read was a post on the social media. And keep in mind that Mr. Anderson does post and take down things on social media, but this one bothered me as a board member and I think you'll understand. On this particular day, it said, "Good morning and happy Wednesday." Here's an article that appeared on the WY Daily last week. If you read the comments from Catherine Golf from the YCSD School Board Office, it appears that they are prepared to dig in and drag this thing out. And he also went on to say that we don't need stinking surveys asking parents the best way to incorporate this. When I read that first paragraph, I lost my breath at first and I said, wait a minute, the parents are the ones that put us in these positions. We're talking about a topic that administratively is being taken care of in a timeline that has already been established and communicated to the board. So that was the first paragraph. And then the fact that we're not going to survey parents for something is, it just caught me off guard. It is imperative that you continue to reach out to your school administrators and school board members regarding this. It has been my experience with the school board and the YCSD administration that if things aren't kept in front of them, they are content and hopeful they would go away. We can't let this happen. I won't let this happen. Please continue your support. Thank you. I appreciate all you do for this cause. I take serious concern with that. This board, our staff, our leaders at the central office, our teachers, our people in all of our buildings, our community, our parents, or everyone works hard to make YCSD one of the best places that people want to come to and put their kids in our schools. And when something like this goes out on social media and then it goes back down again and something else comes back out and comes, goes back down again and sends out these kind of messages, it bothers me as a board member because that's not who we are. That's not YCSD. That's not representing this board. This board works hard. And then this comes out on August 10th or August something at 10:34 in the morning from Mr. Anderson and it says, "Meet my friends. This is Bob and Sally. They have children in York County and want them to grow up and be well-adjusted, so they want more recess time in elementary schools. Bob and Sally are smart. Be like Bob and Sally." And this is what goes up on social media, Facebook. I responded to Mr. Anderson, because I want to be transparent. He sent an email on August seventeenth that said, "Great article today about where the district stands on increasing recess times. I thought I would forward it to you, to us, since I'm assuming we will be briefed on the twenty seventh about these ongoing efforts. I hope you're having a great summer." So my response was, "So, you now support the process and survey? That was my takeaway and many others that contacted me based on your Facebook post. I've heard from some that plan to use that post to run for your seat. We cautioned you many times." Oh, well, we don't need a stinking survey? Really? The voters should have a voice, not just a small, very small percentage, my opinion." I read those things to you because I think it was necessary, because at the end of the day, the work of the school board is for the children in our buildings, our staff, our community. Our superintendent that we hire and evaluate annually is the person that leads the district the everyday, the work that gets done. He hires a team of folks that we approve, that get into the day-to-day, every day. And we trust in their decisions. If we didn't, they wouldn't be sitting in those seats. We trust our administrators, we trust our teachers, we trust the folks that are put in the positions because of profession, their school, everything they've done to get them to where they are, it's about children. And these things here that happen, and this has been smoldering for a while, there's a process, it's already on, is there. Mr. Anderson won't meet with the superintendent on certain things. It's the communication that's not there. And for me, for this, for the betterment of YCSD, this board has to work together as a team. We don't have a choice. It must be done. I've said my piece. I've done this for a long time. I know Barbara's done it longer than I have. I've never in my nineteen years have seen this, so I hope not to see it anymore.
Dr. Jordan? Your comments?
Do I get a chance?
No.
I wasn't talking to you, Robbie.
No, no, sir.
Sorry, I talked to the chairman.
You don't, right now. I'm gonna finish this.
Why don't you read my response?
Go ahead, Dr. George.
So, three things, just on a lighter note. New teacher orientation at TAB High School, tremendous, just very encouraging, so many nice smiling faces. I just, it was frustrating because I couldn't meet everybody, but just very, very, very encouraging. And, you know, when you look at that, and all the people from outside divisions that are perhaps coming on board with us, it makes you feel like, well, you know, we are doing things right. It's tough everywhere. Compensation's tough everywhere, but we're hanging in there, and we're doing things right, so I was very, very proud. On a separate note, tomorrow night, I serve on the New Horizons Board. Tomorrow night is the first night that Casey Roberts, I guess, will kinda man the wheel. He's our new executive director since Joe Johnson retired, so very excited about that. And if you ever get a chance to meeting, he's a super-nice man, and we're real excited about that. I'll just piggyback quickly, I'm not gonna take a lot of time on Mark's comments. I agree one hundred percent. And, you know, number one, Mr. Anderson, you don't speak for me, and I'm not quite sure what we did for the last fifteen years before you ever got on the board, or how we ever survived, but, you know, I don't get in, I don't, excuse me, I don't have something in front of me, and I want it just to go away and show inaction on that. That's not me. You don't know me, so quit speaking for me, okay? And the second thing is, I think unfortunately, this whole issue of recess, which we are definitely heading in that direction, you've done nothing but postpone it, because you've had people calling, questioning the board members, and questioning Dr. Shandor because of confusion that you've caused out there with your reckless comments on social media. So, you know, if anybody has to blame anything on it being delayed, you know, it'd be you that would be the blame. So, and the third thing, and final thing is, for all of you out there, you know, when you go to elect anybody on school board, look a whole lot at how they interact with their school board members, because a school board is a board, it's not an individual, and they need to have at least a shred of boardsmanship. So, for what it's worth, please remember that. Thank you, that's all I have.
Ms. Haywood?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Welcome back, everybody. It's gonna be a fun, fantastic school year. I'm going to join Mr. Medford in saying how proud I am to be a part of the York County School Board team. And as, next year would be thirty years, and we have seen so much accomplished in the school division, so much yet to be accomplished. So I'm very, very proud of the SOL results, and also proud of the accomplishments that we saw tonight, and we know more is coming. My comment to citizens who speak to us, citizens who make contact with us, whether it's at this board meeting, whether it's a pick up a phone and call us, I'm gonna use Dr. James's comment when we talked about the transportation and working with school buses. We hear you. It's not that we don't hear you, we do hear you. We have never been aboard over my last twenty-nine years that we rush to do anything. We take our time, we collect data, we look at what we're already doing, and how can we top that and make that better? And if what we're doing is not right, then we will reinvent the wheel. But you have to take the time and investigate, and then we move forward. And that's something that all boards over my last twenty-nine years have said we have the ability to do. When it comes down to boardsmanship, I'm gonna save my comments, Mr. Richardson, until we move into the section on our school board norms and protocols, if I may.
Yes, ma'am. All right, next I'm up, and so I started off June first by attending the school law conference in Richmond. Then we had a board retreat where we worked on developing board norms and protocols. Then there was July twenty-second through twenty-first, first, twenty-fourth, I'm sorry, I attended a VDOE Equity and Education Training in Richmond with some of the administrative staff, which is a very enlightening training. I also met with the Board of Supervisor Chair and County Administrator Superintendent about this Wybrook and Exchange Program. The county would like to bring that program back, so they're exploring that now to see about getting that reignited here. Then we had the opening of the Leadership Academy at Coastal Community Church on July thirty-first, August eighth, Teacher Leadership Seminar at Coastal Community Church. Then we had the Board Docs Training at the School Board Office, and attended the new teacher orientation with Mr. Medford and Dr. George at TAB High School, and that was very inspiring to see a lot of the new teachers and their excitement in a new school year, too. I attended the Youth Commission Orientation at TAB Library, and I do want to mention and say kudos to our teachers for the SOL scores, especially with our subgroups, for example, our economically disadvantaged children, that sort of thing. They did an excellent job in our subgroups there, so big kudos off to our teachers in keeping up the good work. And just to piggyback on the other board members, I think communication is the key. I've had conversations with Mr. Anderson, we've talked. I wasn't very pleased with the comments and lumping all the board members into, we're just sitting on our desk and watching things go by. I was a little offended when I first saw it, actually upset about it. But as time went on, I moved on, but there needs to be more communication. So, we're gonna move ahead in the agenda, and we're gonna go to financial matters. And Mr. Anderson, you have financial matters?
Yes, and please bear with me because it's significant. First, we have consideration of approval for claims certified for payment. For June, we have instructional-related expenditures totaling three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars and included payments to Pearson Education, two hundred eighty-four thousand for sixth through eighth grade interactive science licenses, Heinemann Profession, four hundred eighty-one, forty-one thousand eight hundred dollars for sixth through eighth grade biography books, New Horizons, twenty-four thousand five hundred sixty-four for tuition, and VIMS for ten thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars for fall field trips for all seventh grade students. Payments for technology-related items totaled approximately eight hundred seventy-five thousand five hundred and included payments to Dell, one hundred fifty thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars for laptops, CDW, six hundred forty thousand eight hundred thirty-one dollars for various software license agreements, PCMog.gov for twenty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars for desktop scanners for the new financial system, and Cox Cable, twenty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars for telephone, internet, and network services. There were also payments to SEDEXO totaling two hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars for May food service operations. Payments related to construction and maintenance projects totaled ninety-eight thousand seven hundred dollars and included payments to Hudson and Associates for work at TAB and the Grafton Complex, TAB Elementary, sorry. For July, annual subscriptions for memberships totaling fifty-three thousand, included payments to Virginia School Board Association for eleven thousand five hundred dollars, International Baccalaureate for eleven thousand six hundred fifty dollars, DCD Consulting for twelve thousand five hundred dollars for professional development resources, and frontline technologies, seventeen thousand four hundred seven dollars for the leave management and substitute finder system. Payment to the Virginia Association of Counties Risk Pool for seventeen thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars for workman's compensation insurance premium. Payments related to construction and maintenance projects totaled seventeen thousand fifty-four dollars and included payments to Hudson and Associates for work at the Grafton Complex. Next, we have consideration of approval of financial reports for July. For revenues, there are no significant differences in state revenues in July twenty-eighteen when compared to twenty-seventeen. Federal revenue for July twenty-eighteen is down more than six hundred thousand dollars from July of twenty-seventeen. This is due to the fact that impact aid revenues were not received on regular schedule, so amounts will differ month to month due to the timing in which payments are made by the federal government. And for local revenues, York County Government had not posted appropriation as of July thirty-first. For expenditures, due to the implementation of a new financial system, the school division was late in processing purchase orders, which in turn delayed the purchasing of goods and services for July. Significant changes relating to food service budget. For revenues and expenditures, local revenues for Food Service Fund are about twenty thousand dollars less in July twenty-eighteen when compared to twenty-seventeen due to a decline in prepaid cafeteria sales. Incumbrances for food service operations are two point three million higher in July twenty-eighteen than in twenty-seventeen, and this is due to the timing in which SEDEXO purchase order was encumbered in the financial system. And finally, consideration of approval of Resolution eighteen dash twenty-eight, a resolution authorizing a specific procurement. We have a resolution for the board's approval authorizing procurements for more than fifty thousand dollars, and there are four items on the resolution. Three requisitions relate to tuition, YCSD pays the New Horizons Regional Educational Center for Special Ed Career and Technical Ed and Governor's School, and the fourth requisition is an annual subscription for Power School for online instructional resources.
Is there a motion to approve the financial matters that is listed?
Motion to move financial matters?
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Barbara. Okay. Before I turn that over to Ms. Ford, I just want to explain the new voting process. Instead of her calling out each name and us voting, it's gonna pop up on our screens for us to vote, and then we'll show up on the screen here at home. So, we're hoping that'll work. This is our first time doing it live, so we're gonna work on that. So, Ms. Ford, you have it from here, once you get the votes tallied.
The motion to approve financial matters is listed, passed five to zero.
I like that.
It was showing up the last time during training up there.
It will.
Okay. There it is. So it's showing up on the screen, good. So now we're gonna move on to the consent calendar, and I'll go over the list briefly. Approval of personnel actions, approval of donations totaling four thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty cent, consideration of approval of minutes from special meeting of June eighth, June fifteenth, and July sixth, and August third, approval of Resolution eighteen dash forty-two, declaring the intention to reimburse, the school division to reimburse itself for the proceeds of one or more grants by the Commonwealth of Virginia for certain expenditures made, approval of Resolution eighteen dash forty-three, amending the adoption of agreement to the York County School Division for the four oh three B Plan, and approval of fiscal year twenty-twenty proposed budget calendar. So is there a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as listed?
I have to, hold on, it's gotta catch up.
Okay.
I move approval.
Second. Okay, says my, I have an error on mine. Can I throw technology out the window?
Mr. Medford voted.
I checked yes, but then instead of error.
I checked yes.
So did I.
I spoke too soon.
So we may have to revert back to the old way if we need to.
Yeah. Yeah, let's move on.
I think the old ways passed.
Of course.
This is gonna save Sandy a lot of time.
Yes, the motion passed five to zero.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Skinner. So next, we're gonna move on to action items, consideration of approval of school board norms and protocols. This was an item discussed at our school board professional development that we had on June eighth. At this meeting, the Virginia School Boards Association recommended that the board, as a board, we discuss the importance of these items and adopt the document just as we do our school board code of conduct. So, I can open up the school board norms. For example, developing of the board agenda, the agenda is drafted by the chairman and the superintendent, how to get items placed on the agenda. It goes into committee reporting expectations, responding to the media inquiries, section on, use of social media, section on how board monitors updates of the school board strategic plan, and so forth. So, is there, well, we need to have a motion before we have a discussion. Is there a motion and a second to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I rise to the order of privilege. Do you recognize it?
For what?
I have comments, and I can...
No, I don't recognize you, I'm sorry.
I move approval.
Second.
I just like this...
Now we have discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
Now we have discussion on it.
I just like to point out that we did spend an entire day in our professional development. The VSBA sent a couple of staffers down, actually, there's their CEO.
Executive Director.
Yeah, executive director and her assistant. So, they came down and worked with the entire board that day, and this is the result of all of us, the entire board, giving feedback, having discussion, and developing this document. I just, I think that needs to be emphasized as we discuss.
So is each board member...
Let me, if I, I thought, can we have some more comment?
If you have more discussion on it.
Oh, yes, yes, if I may. In looking at this full document, and I don't know if citizens have gone online to look at it, but we have had to draft this as a means of governance for this board. at it, but we have had to draft this as a means of governance for this board. When you think about school board member duties, you think about governance, policy, financial accountability, and to oversee the superintendent. If the superintendent is not doing his or her job, then we got a problem. But we, we look for the best person that we can find that meets the needs of the school division, and we bring that person on. This is my fourth superintendent, no more, promise me, no more. But you look for someone who has the credentials and the heart and the desire to meet the needs of York County students, and that's where we are as a board. I said many years ago, I have a paying job that I go to, maybe not every day of the week, but I go to, and that job is not his job. So I have to believe in some credibility that the person that sits in that seat can do, and when I have questions or concerns, then that's who I go to. This board, any board across the state of Virginia or anywhere in the country, your members are composed of people from different walks of life. Our backgrounds, our five backgrounds are so very different and diverse, and we bring those backgrounds to this board. Any board member goes to their board with their backgrounds. And you work as five individuals, but you come together as one family for the purpose of educating all of our students in this division the best way we know how. And that education brings in staff, brings in faculty, brings in transportation, whatever that variable is. The ultimate goal is that students that leave us. So we can sit behind doors in closed meetings and have discussions, pick up the phone call, and we can talk about it. But the goal is, we are a unified whole that meets the needs of our students entrusted to our care. And if we can't do that, then, then I think we have a more serious problem in what we're doing and trying to do as a school board member. We are governed by Robert's Rules of Order. Am I correct? That's still in place, Mr. Chair? Still Robert's Rules of Order? Which means the majority speaks, and when it's the majority, whether it be three, two, four, one, five, zero, the majority speaks, and we move on, and we take care of the business at hand. Have I been in a situation over my twenty-nine years that I have been the lone dissenter? Yeah, I have. I voted against something, but I explained why, and I moved on, but I had to accept the voice of the majority of the board. This board needs to get back to handling the responsibilities that it's entailed and been given to do by the Code of Virginia. Again, governance, policy, financial accountability, and oversee of the superintendent, who then oversees the rest of you all. I am not a, a social media person. I don't have time to sit in Facebook, so I don't know what the heck is going around until these gentlemen tell me what's going on. If you've got time to sit and do all this mess on social media, and then it comes back to get you, then maybe we need to rethink this. We tell our kids, when they do something on social media, we reprimand them. So again, think about what you put out there that represents all of us.
I'm gonna say, you're discussing that because that's part of the norms that we have.
That's part of the norms. Again, when I look back at, one of the norms says that we watch our posting on social So again, I think it goes back to when you look at all these expectations, and this is what we set at a retreat, and they've been fine tuned, but the overall belief is where we are as a board and how we want to move forward. Thank you.
I have some comments.
Discussion on the board, on the protocols?
When I saw that this was on the agenda, I went back and looked at my notes from the training session back in June. I do recall us discussing this extensively. I also recall this, rules and protocols that we're about to vote on being given to us as an example for us to adapt or adjust to meet the needs of our board in our situations. I don't recall, and none of my notes indicate, that we discussed it after that to conform it to how we feel it needed to be conformed to our board, unless I missed something. So I'd like to make a motion to amend...
Okay.
To post, to postpone the voting until September so that we, as a board, could discuss it further and really fine tune, because there's some verbiage and some terminology in there that I still have some questions on.
Okay, has been a motion made to amend? Motion died for lack of second. So we have a motion before us. We did discuss these norms. We came up with these in sessions. I think there was a couple of concerns in one or two of these, and I waited until this meeting, we knew we were gonna present them to discuss them. I never got a phone call or any issues from any board member that there was any issues from any of the four of you. There was one concern with Mr. Medford that we discussed already prior about the, it was the, the last part about revisiting or revising, I can't remember the exact one it was, but after some thought, he was good with the wording the way it was. So that's the only discussion it was. So we have a, go ahead, Mr. George.
Am I able to, I don't, I don't know.
Do you have a discussion?
Yeah, about this, yeah.
Okay, we're getting ready to vote, but if you still have discussion, go right ahead.
Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit torn because, you know, if Mr. Anderson has serious concerns about some things on here, I mean, the ultimate thing that we want is to be able to craft this so that allows us to be unified. And moving forward this month as opposed to next month, if that doesn't accomplish that or lend itself to that, I mean, does that make sense? Would it make more sense to take a month if it's something that we can do that will allow us to become more unified? I don't have a problem with that, but it's the pleasure of the board.
There's a couple ways we could do that. If we voted, we could amend it if there's any issues, or, or we could wait till September and do it. But there was a motion that died for lack of second on that, on that amendment.
Are we able to delay this? I don't wanna vote no. I want to delay.
That's the pleasure of the board.
But in order to delay, I need a date on the calendar that we will sit down as a board, whether it's the work session, but we have to sit down to, to talk as a board about the concerns. That's my only, you know, we can delay it, and I have no problem. I, I thought that Robbie too, to make sure that we have conversation, but we all have to come to the table. I don't know how much more talking is gonna do, but it's, I'm willing to give it a try.
Here's what I suggest. My, my thought would be, I know how difficult it was for us to schedule this. It took, it took a lot of rescheduling to get this particular professional development piece done as a board for all five of us with, with schedules other than what we do here. I, the motion on the table is to vote for what we have. It doesn't mean we can't go back and revisit it when we schedule a day, find a day that the board can come together again with our superintendent, but I feel that we ought to go ahead and put the protocols as they are in place now for reasons, and then any board member can bring it back. Once we find a date scheduled that will, if that's the player to the board, I don't support it, but if we come back together, then so be it, but it may take a couple of months to find a date that everybody can get together. So I, I call the, I call the motion.
Okay, the motion's been called. So we had a motion and a second to approve the school board norms and protocols.
Voting is available.
So we can still come back. We can amend.
I wanted to make sure that if we vote yes for this tonight, we need to be able to come back to it.
We can come back to any topic that the, the board chooses to.
I am going to request, if we look at the September tenth work session, we start at six, can we start at five to do this?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm, I'm good with that.
And this is just, this is just us hashing out the concerns.
What is the date of the next regular meetings, at the seventeenth?
Tenth is the next work session.
The tenth is the work session.
That would be the appropriate place to discuss this.
But the, to vote on this would be the seventeenth, and vote the following week on the seventeenth.
Do you have objection to that? Because we need to have a while.
Yeah, I don't have objection to it, but I think we still need to have this in place. We can always amend.
We can put this in place, long as it's understood, we can amend it when we meet on the, and Melanie is saying yes, thank you.
I will vote yes, as long as that date is confirmed.
I think all the board members have agreed, September tenth.
You were saying, and say five o'clock?
At five o'clock? Is that it?
Yeah.
Good, okay. September tenth, five o'clock. We'll discuss the board norms and, norms and protocols in more depth and detail to see if there's any adjustments to the board norms and protocols that we wanna make, and we'll make those at the September seventeenth meeting where we can vote on them. Does that suffice to the board members? Okay. All right, voting is up.
The motion to approve school board norms and protocols passed five to zero.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ford. So now, we're gonna move on to consideration of approval of the revised pay plan. Dr. Shandor, can you share information about this item?
I can. I'm gonna actually ask, Dr. Jim Carroll, please come to the podium, Chief Human Resource Officer. He's gonna share additional information regarding the revised pay plan.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Chairman Richardson, members of the board, before you now is a motion to revise the FY19 pay plan that you approved last June. For the most part, the lion's share affects compensation for bus drivers, driver assistants, bus-related supplements and incentives, and one correction to a counselor leadership supplement. First, a little background, all school divisions in the Hampton Roads area and in Virginia struggle to attract and retain bus drivers and assistants, and although we gave the drivers and dispatchers a raise in FY17, our compensation, especially in starting pay, is lagging behind our biggest competitors for approximately two dollars an hour. After the staff reviewed the recent driver focus groups that Dr. James mentioned earlier, there were several compensation themes that arose there, and it became clear to staff that, that the current non-licensed pay grade structure could not allay these, these issues, and any attempts to do so would cause more internal equity issues with our compensation in the non-licensed pay grades. This issue is emblematic of a larger issue with our non-licensed pay grades and our non-licensed employees having dissatisfaction with that pay structure. And you know that we discussed that in an earlier work session earlier this year, and that is now currently under staff review. However, the current labor market competition for bus drivers demands more immediate action with this particular employee group. Therefore, staff recommends creating a separate pay grade for drivers and assistants, have that put into place so that we can be more competitive with our regional neighbors, at least until a long-term solution can be arrived at for the non-licensed scales. You'll find in the board brief a summary of the revisions, but I'll recap them here. First of all, on pages four and sixteen, you'll see that the, we'll remove the bus driver assistants from pay grade four of the non-licensed pay grades, and then they can be found on page fifty-five in a new salary schedule. Pages four and twenty-three, we removed the bus dispatcher and driver from pay grade eleven for a new salary schedule that is on page fifty-four now. Pages nine and ten correct some errors on our part in the Fair Labor Standards Act exemption status for two positions. On page nine, the manager of school, food services, and on page ten, for the benefits program specialist. Page fifty-eight increases the substitute bus driver rate from twelve twenty-five to fourteen dollars per hour, and adds a bus driver and training rate that was not published in previous pay plans. On page sixty-five, you'll find that the lead counselor elementary was increased from one thousand five hundred dollars to two thousand four ninety-two. That number matches the supplement for the secondary lead counselor. Their work is similar, and this was a, this is something of equity issue that we want to rectify. And finally, page sixty-seven, it adds an attendance bonus plan for the transportation employees that Dr. James discussed earlier. That completes the motion, and I'm ready for any questions that you might have.
I'm just happy to see the changes in salary and, and the levels and so forth. That's fantastic.
All right, is there a motion and a second to approve the revised pay plan?
Motion to approve revised pay plan, please.
Second.
And our electronic voting should be coming up.
Motion to approve the revised pay plan passed five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So in policy discussions, we have none, none for first reading or second reading, and last is a report of the superintendent. Dr. Shandor, I'll now have you share your report.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I have just a few bullets that I wanted to talk through this evening. We welcomed over a hundred and five new teachers at our new teacher orientation, as many of you attended that about a week and a half ago, I guess now. We were so excited to have the team of professionals joining YCSD. In addition to the presentations from central office staff, the new teachers also had the opportunity to learn from current YCSD teachers. We also, this summer, had a teacher learning, teacher leader summer academy. We had over a hundred and twenty-five teachers attend our first teacher leader summer academy in August. Jack Balderman from Solution Tree, who we had a few years ago come in, many board members you'll remember you attended, he came and did some work with us on strengthening our professional learning communities. Forty of these participants will continue in a teacher leader cohort throughout this school year. Also, we have Leadership Academy, as we do each summer. Day one of our three-day Leadership Academy included over a hundred and thirty leaders in, in York County School Division, including principals, assistant principals, testing coordinators, and two teachers from each school, along with our central office staff. Dr. Joe Sanfilippo is superintendent in Falls Creek School District in Wisconsin. He's also the author of Hacking Leadership, did a wonderful job, gave a powerful message on inspiring learning, and, and we were really excited to have him here. The following two days included professional development on a variety of topics, including school safety, special education, and instruction. Last Thursday, we hosted the first of our three-day YCSD division-wide professional development training with all of our instructional personnel. I also wanted to share that we had our, I also attended the YCSD Job Fair hosted at McGruder Elementary School earlier this month. The purpose was to recruit and interview candidates for custodial, transportation, and non-licensed instructional openings in, for Upper County. The fair was advertised in the Daily Press, in the Virginia Gazette, as well as the YCSD website, social media pages, and school marquees. We had nearly a hundred candidates attend that event, so that was really a wonderful event. I want kudos to the HR team, Dr. Carroll, and, and the rest of all of our folks for, for putting on that event. Also, I want to thank the custodial staff for their hard work over this summer. You know, I've been in a number of the buildings throughout the last couple of weeks as we're preparing. The buildings are shined up, cleaned, and prepared for our returning students and staff. Their diligence and attention to, to detail is appreciated. I also had the opportunity to speak to a hundred and fifty bus drivers and, and bus assistants last Wednesday for, for training related to school, related to school and transportation safety. And Dr. James shared some of his thoughts earlier about what that room felt like. You know, our bus team and transportation team got pretty beat up last year for a number of different reasons, whether it was communication or whatever the reasons were. I can't tell you how proud I am of them. That's a really resilient group, and I meant what I... That's a really resilient group, and I meant what I said earlier. I read every single line of all their comments, so did Dr. James, and I know James Lash did as well. And it's important that they know that they're heard, they're valued members of this team, and I so appreciate the board's support this evening for, for all that we're going to do with, with them. And I'll end it with this, in seven days, we're going to welcome back returning and new students, and we're looking forward to a wonderful school year. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So if there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll see you back on September the 10th at 5:00 PM is when the board's going to meet to talk about our board norms versus the 6:00 PM time that we originally had for our next work session. And as a reminder, our next regular meeting will be the week after, September 17th at 7:00 PM, and we're looking forward to a great start of the school year, and have a good evening. Thank you.